Lee Stanfield, President, please, the Legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, impotent fool with liberty and justice for all. Madam President, call the roll. Here.
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 Yes.
Here.
Here.
Okay, I would now ask for a motion to appoint Ansel and Glick as corporate council for the village of Sock Village. I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
I make a motion to table the matter. The village has attorneys.
I second the motion.
I do have the authority to appoint them, and I will appoint them as my corporate council for the next thirty days. There was no motion.
Point of order, your honor, Mayor. On the agenda is the appointment. There's been a motion to table and a second. There's no discussion on a motion to table. I call for a roll.
As I stated, I will appoint Ansel and Glick as my corporate council for the next thirty days. That is my right to do that, sir.
With all due respect, your honor, a temporary appointment is not on the agenda, and because of the special meeting and the action of the Board of Trustees to restore Olson, Sturkis, village attorney, there's no vacancy to appoint anyone as village attorney.
You said there's no vacancy?
There is no vacancy as village attorney.
I do make a vacancy at this particular point. I was trying not to say that. I do not, and I will go on record, I do not want Olson and Sturkis to be my corporate council. So if you want to say that is what I do not want, then I've not talked about that. I thought I'd just explain why. I do not want Olson and Sturkis to be corporate council. They can be council for the village later, but I don't want, I cannot sit here and have someone do what they done and then ask them for advice, sir.
And right, W. Williams.
Point of order. Are we gonna work according to Robert Rules of Orders? Are we gonna do the things that we wanna do the way we wanna do them? There's been a motion and a second on the floor to table this item. There shouldn't even be discussion on this item. This is Robert's Rule of Order. There is a motion on the floor to table this item. There has been a motion and a second. The village clerk should call the roll. Point of order.
Okay, first of all, I do have the right to appoint counsel.
With all due respect, Mayor, we have attorneys from Ansel and Glick that I've worked with and respect, and we've known them. They're shaking their heads. You simply can't do that at this meeting under the law. There's been a motion and a second to table.
What I wanna do right at this meeting is get rid of Olson and Sturkis corporate council. I wanna do that. Cannot do that.
Again, you can't do that at this meeting. You tried to do that on Friday. You sent the letter, and that's the reason for the special meeting. And the Board of Trustees, the corporate authorities, have overridden your letter by a two-thirds vote.
The mayor's own council is shaking their head that he's acting inappropriately. Now, you can believe what you want. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Point of order, Mr. Mayor. You're acting inappropriately. Can we please finish this motion?
Why are you addressing?
Because you need to finish this motion.
Madam trustee, right now, you're not running the meeting.
I'm not trying to run the meeting. I'm trying to finish this motion.
I understand what was just said. I don't need your clarification. I don't need that. I'm not saying that. I heard what the attorney said. And I heard what the lawyers are saying. I understand that. I need clarification.
Can you call the vote?
So I'm not, if the board doesn't, okay, fine. But I will put another letter out just to let you know. I'll be transparent. I do not want Olson and Sturkis to represent me, and I need to get my own attorneys because I don't trust. So whatever has to be done, I will find out. Number five.
Please call the roll.
Please call the roll.
Call the roll.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to table.
To table what? Okay, who made the motion? Could you re-estate the motion that you made? Could you re-estate the motion that you made?
I made a motion to table because the village has attorneys.
And I second.
Table what?
Read it.
Your appointment of Glick and corporate council.
So you had made a motion to table the appointment of Ansel and Glick?
Yeah.
Okay, and you said second?
Yes, sir.
Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Green.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Approval of executive session minutes. We will approve them one by one. I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session and release these minutes for April 16, 2019. I'll take.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, are you not gonna do executive session? Are you gonna do it again?
I was doing executive session to inform you guys of the law firm and give you better information. Obviously, you don't wanna go in that direction.
Well, I'd like to go into executive session for personnel.
And pending possible litigation. Are you making that motion, Trustee?
I make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel and pending.
It was moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Williams. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll accept a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, seconded by trustee Williams. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Juzinski.
Here.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bell.
Here.
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 Motion carried. Out of number five, approval of executive board minute meetings. I'll entertain a motion for approval and release of these executive board members, board minutes. First one, April 16, 2019. I'll accept the motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes, sir. I beg your pardon. It's an abstain. I'm sorry.
Trustee Bell.
Abstain.
Trustee Brewer.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
Abstain.
Abstain goes with the majority, so motion is carried. I'll accept the motion for the approval and release of the executive session meetings for the date of May 7, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Todd. Any question? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Williams.
Abstain.
Trustee Bell.
Abstain.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes. Abstain.
Trustee Todd.
Motion is carried. I need a motion for the executive session minutes to be released for May 15, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, I'm sorry, moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Bell.
Abstain.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
Abstain.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Abstain.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion for approval and to hold the executive session meetings for February 12, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes. Abstain.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Abstain.
Trustee Bell.
Abstain.
Motion is carried. I'll accept a motion for the approval and to hold the executive session meetings for September 12, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any question?
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
Abstain.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Abstain.
Trustee Bell.
Abstain.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve and to hold the executive session meetings for November 14, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Todd. Any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Juzinski.
Abstain.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Abstain.
Trustee Bell.
Abstain.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session meetings and hold for May 8, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Abstain.
Trustee Bell.
Abstain.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
Abstain.
Motion carried. I'll accept the motion for the approval of the executive session minutes and hold for this period of May 28, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Bell. Any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Carry. Next item of public comment, you have three minutes to speak on any topic. Each speaker may comment on any matter. You have one opportunity to speak for three minutes, and I will answer those questions at the end of the comment. Please just state your name. You don't have to put your address.
Pat Couch. I had an opportunity last week to attend the night court session, and I would just like to state that it's an absurd night court, that we have a group, I think it's called Stutley Group, that has an adjudicator. We have officers, and we have a code enforcement person that gets out, works their tail off, issuing tickets. And then you come to night court, and they dismiss, dismiss, dismiss. Oh, I'll reduce that fine. That's absurd. Why do these people go out and work their tails off if they're not gonna be held accountable? That needs to be looked at by this board. Second issue, I brought it up last week regarding the water bills that residents are not paying. I know of one incident that has not been paid since October. I brought this up again last week. This resident hasn't paid his water bill since October, getting free garbage pickup. That's absurd. Somewhere, somebody's not doing their job. That needs to be looked at desperately. How many other people are getting by with not paying their water bills and getting free garbage pickup? I did call Republic, and I was informed that they only get a notice possibly once a year of all the non-shut, or the people that are supposed to be shut off. How can we pay them if we only send them a notice once a year? That needs to be looked at. Inspections. Inspections of property is a joke. I know of a particular property that has not been inspected properly. The resident is still living in that property, and again, this is the property that hasn't paid a water bill since October. He has not had his certifications done. What's the problem? Mr. Wizwati made a deal. It needs to be addressed by someone because it was inspected prior to this individual's moving in, and then Mr. Wizwati said it had to be re-inspected. Now, mind you, it was inspected, a brand-new furnace had been put in. It passed every single inspection. A few months later, Mr. Wizwati said it needed to be inspected again. Lo and behold, the mayor's cousin, I understand, is the inspector. It failed every single inspection from a brand-new furnace that was put in, but it failed on inspection. Somehow, there's a problem here. I think we need to address that, folks. Also, this dog that was supposed to been gone a year and a half ago, or it's been a problem for over a year. That dog is still running loose, and it was on my porch again this past week. The people were supposed to come to court. They failed to come to court. The dog is hidden in their basement. Something needs to be addressed on that dog. Thank you.
Robert Chakowski. I apologize for my outburst earlier, but I take offense to the mayor making comments at the homes that we're providing, that we're investing a good deal of money, that they're substandard in any fashion. We make our best efforts and go well above and beyond anything that is considered normal to create a good home for our tenants and good residence for Sock Village. So, Mr. Mayor, again, I take offense.
Some of you may remember me. My name's Ted. Mr. Mayor, I understand you were looking for me. Ted Maras. M-A-R-A-S. Mr. Mayor, I understand you were looking for me, but I had to step out because I had to chill out. I'm really angry. I'm trying to keep this politically correct. Mr. Finch, we haven't had the pleasure of working together. I certainly hope that we can, and I hope you help this town. Please, help us, because we need help. Chief, we've just met today. Please, we need help in this town from your department. I think you have some of the best police officers out there, and just continue to go into what you do. Mr. Mayor, with regard to my quote moldy, subpar homes, forty-seven of them, I'm gonna just guess it's an average of two votes per property that I have. Do you think that they would support me when I asked them to support my friends and my candidates? Forty-seven times two, in today's math, is ninety-four votes. You wanna do the math? Two years ago, pal. So, yes, I take offense that my properties are moldy. I take offense as to all of my tenants, who will understand they are called subpar tenants. See, now, this is hearsay because I wasn't here when you made those comments, so I apologize if I'm wrong. And, Mr. Chief, if there's any problems with any of my properties, I would appreciate a phone call because I don't have tolerance for stupidity. I don't have tolerance for criminals, and I don't have tolerance for people who don't abide by the law. If there's anything I can do to help my tenants, if there's anything I can do to help my tenants be better citizens, let me know. I'll get on them. And if I were to have a wedding tomorrow, all forty-seven houses would be invited. That's the kind of relationship I have with my tenants. And if that's a slumlord, that's pretty brutal on my tenants.
Larry Sav, your honor. I applaud your courage. With regard to Robert Rules of Order, which Ms. Williams speaks of all the time, only members are allowed to make motions, according to Robert Rules of Order. Out of order or point of order is a motion. Therefore, the attorney had no authority to call for point of order, but none of you who know Robert Rules of Order, check that. So if we're gonna do it by order, do it by order. Stop picking and choosing. With regard to my conspiracy theory. Oh, one more point. The lawyer pointed out, your honor, that you made a whole lot of mistakes and allegations against you, but he also admitted that he was the attorney at the time advising you on these things, so maybe he gave you the wrong advice. I just wanna point out that there were some motions made prior to the new trustees coming on board, and I think they were made around basically this was supposed to be an orientation meeting. However, litigation was done, which the attorney was a part of that. So I think that maybe that should be investigated also as conspiracy. That's just my opinion.
Kathy Betcher, I have a couple of things that I wanna ask. First of all, I wanna find out about the person being hired for the community center. Have we gotten any applications? Have we got anybody in mind? We really need to get some programs together for these kids. That's, I mean, you guys know that I'm up here asking for that every week. Second, I'd like to find out if we can enforce the, first, I'm gonna say this. I know that our police are overworked, and I know that our code enforcement officer is overworked, but we have people walking in the street when it is pitch black outside. You can't see them. You come around the corner and you miss them by inches. It may be trivial to everybody else, but I know I would feel really hurt. I'd probably end up in an institution if I ever hit somebody and killed them. But I think we need to start enforcing that ordinance where you can't walk in the street, you can't play in the street. I know our sidewalks are bad, but our streets are just as bad. So at least you're somewhat safe on the sidewalk. Let's get them up on the sidewalk. Third, I was a little bit upset when I read that newspaper that's going around that our new trustees are being blamed for a $60 million loss in the village. As far as I know, it was because of firing with Mr. Wizwati or letting him go. But as far as I know, big corporations have teams of people that go out and do their due diligence. They do studies. They do, if Mr. Wizwati is not there to talk to them, it is not gonna mean a hill of beans. If they wanna be here, if they wanna build here, I don't care who is sitting up in those seats, and I don't care if Mr. Wizwati's here. They'll put that business wherever they wanna put it. Thank you.
Linda Camaro. My concern is I had a new roof put on my house last week. As I'm sure you know, Derry, because you drove by a few times while it was being done. Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess, the honorable. I'm trying to be nice. My problem is contractors went up there and got a permit. They were told the wrong size thickness of the plywood that needed to be used on the roof. Luckily, before they started, somebody with brains, also known as my father, came over and said, "No, that's not the right thickness. You can't put that on there." So I called the village. They didn't know what it is. They don't know the thickness. How am I supposed to get a roof done? So my father comes up to the village. "Joe Wizwati, what's the thickness of the plywood you need to use?" "I don't know." "What do you mean you don't know?" "I don't know." "Well, don't you have a book that says what thickness, what is up to code?" "No, we don't have that here." Now, somebody, and I'm trying to be nice, but somebody took the position of somebody who didn't know what the code was, could not answer that question. So the project was stopped for five hours. I had to come home from work, take a day off without pay, and finally get a call from Tanya and said, "Okay, here is a thickness you need to use for your roof to be up to code." That's Joe Wizwati, who should've known that, who couldn't give an answer. So how does somebody walk into the village hall and say, "Can you tell me what the code is for this?" And he stand there and say, "I don't know." Why are we paying him all this money if he does not know? Now, if they had put in the quarter inch like they were first told when they got the permit, my house would've never passed code. Luckily, somebody got me the paper that showed me what needed to be put in there. Why couldn't Joe get it for me? Why couldn't he get it for my father when he went up there? When the contractor went up there for the third time? When the contractor went up there for the third time, Joe told him, "I don't have anything to give you." Why is that? Again, he's not doing his job. Some of us want to fix up our houses. We can't make any repairs if we don't follow rules. I'm sorry, I follow rules. I know other people sometimes just say, "You know what? We'll do it on the weekends where they don't find us, where they don't have to get a permit, they won't say anything." I followed rules. But I could not get the information I needed. So, for me to lose a day of work, for the contractor to have to sit there for five hours waiting to get an answer, it's unacceptable. It's just something that needs to be worked on. Mr. Burgess, it just needs to be taken care of. We gotta do better than this. I'm not blaming you. I'm blaming the people that work for the town that don't have the knowledge that they need to have for people to make repairs on their house.
Yes, me. Too bad. Maria Scavetta. So, a lot of your people that are coming out to the meeting that you and your wife have dragged out and been telling stories about me, hateful stories, which is really sad that they don't know me and they have to believe what you tell them. Your wife has written nasty stuff on Facebook. She has written where I work, my salary and everything. I told you I had to go to HR to tell them that. Now, you remember, you asked me. I was your treasurer from day one when you started your campaign. So, I know what you do, what you don't do, what you shouldn't be doing and what you're doing, okay? Then you asked me to be the village treasurer. And you know it took me a month and a half to accept because of my job for independence and conflict of interest. And I finally got through all that. And my job gave me permission to take the position, and I did. And when I was in the back, I saw that you were not doing what you were supposed to be doing. I saw your secretary going around gossiping with everybody. And I told you I was not going to be put in that position because of my job. That's my livelihood, and I need it. The six thousand dollars I was getting here was not worth losing my job. So, all these people that don't know me and keep threatening me, if they continue to threaten me, because I have gone to HR since the last meeting when people were threatening me, telling me they were gonna kick my ass, I will press charges. And you will also be held accountable because you are part of the problem. And you can laugh all you want, because you know what I'm saying is true. And you know that I know it's true. You're lying. You're not doing what you're supposed to be doing. Again, the only thing you said that you were gonna do was fire all the people in the building because... Because you have been dead us against them. And so did Joe Wizwadi. Now be here every week to say my part.
Judy Cast here. I also had an opportunity to attend night court and see the workings. And I was extremely disappointed. I didn't see the professionalism. I didn't see our staff, um, being questioned about some of our codes and things. I just saw a litigator that, um, decided on her own to throw things out and cut fines in half. Makes you wonder if...I even made the remark. I wonder if she made enough money tonight to buy herself some dinner. Because she threw so many things out and cut things in half. A comment was made tonight about you and the Olston and Stirk Group and how they didn't advise you on some of the things that you did that they brought up. But apparently, they weren't listening closely because, as he read, you stopped having them at the meetings. Therefore, they didn't hear what you said. And how were they to tell you right from wrong or you can't do that if they weren't here and didn't receive any information from the present board that was up there? You remember all the bobbleheads. It's sad that we're divided, and we don't have to be. But we're never gonna be in the wrong. And I told you a long, long time ago, I will never, ever change my mind if I think I'm right. Don't tell me. Show me where I'm wrong, and I'll publicly apologize to you. Can you say the same?
I attend night court, but, um... The reason for court is to collect money. Now, I don't know what happened. I will attend since residents feel that it was not done. I don't like to come to night court because I'm gonna want someone to appeal to me because someone ruined chicken and then come and ask. That's the reason why I don't think I should be there. That's what you're going before the adjudicator. That's the way it should be. But I will find out about the way it was ran. And then I will talk to the adjudicator. As far as the garbage and, um... I don't know where you got the information that water bills were not being paid and the dates that were given out that the water bills weren't paid. That's pretty good information if you knew when someone didn't pay their water bill. But I'm sure, um... That's not the case, because we're, right now, going after everybody that hasn't paid their water bill. I'm sorry that a person had to make a statement, a libelous statement. You got the lawyers here to say that another person that works for the village made a deal. But, you know, that's not...that's neither here nor there. When I talked about the homes, I didn't mention anybody tonight. I didn't say...I didn't say who did what. I just said we have homes here. I don't know where it came from that I said that so-and-so had and they just...I said that I would like to talk to the person that talked to me in my office. I said I won't go and publicly say what was transpired. But I did not call any one person's name. I'm gonna say that right now. I didn't call any investor's name. I didn't even make reference to anyone's name. I said that we don't need to have that in the village. That's what I stated. So, by someone saying I called their homes substandard or the people that live there, that's erroneous and that's a lie, I did not even say that. I didn't even mention that. I would never...I don't know. I haven't been in a home, but I hear what's going on. There are some homes that are that like that. But to say that I said that, I did not say that, and that's not true. And then also to make a statement that I said that they have subpar tenants, I'm not...I would...no. But then again, people say what they want. And if it's negative, it sells. As far as the community center, there is, um, a... A flyer out there. I'm not a flyer, I'm sorry. An application for a part-time, parts and recs director. I've only gotten one so far. And, um, right now, it's being ran pretty decently by volunteer. So, I'm back outside to rush and get someone in there unless I can make sure they can bring me some programs. I don't need someone to sit there and watch. I got someone doing that now volunteering. So, I'm not rushing for that reason. And, um, continue to keep looking until I can find someone. That being said, um... Some things I don't answer. That being said, go to the next item. Reports of officers, um... First item is the mayor's comment, the mayor's report. I know we've been listening to all of this negativity and everything going back and forth, but, um... I just wanna say that I went down to Springfield three different times, two times right behind one another. And that trip down there to Springfield really paid off. And I'm proud to announce, and I'm probably sure that, you know, I don't know...I'll just put it like this. We were awarded by the House Bill, um, 0062. That's the House Bill for the House, um... Illinois House Capital Bill. We've asked for a lot more. But, and I've talked to, um, Mr. Well about this, and we're trying to come up so... Boy, don't think this is gonna be money that you can put in the pocket and do this, this, and this with. This is money that we're gonna try to do things that we couldn't normally do with the village. Anyway, we were awarded with the, um, House Bill 62, six hundred thousand dollars. It has, um, itemized things on here. Five hundred thousand dollars was awarded just for fire hydrants and valves. The Senate bill, House and the Senate, Senate awarded us another three hundred, a hundred... Well, three hundred thousand dollars for a total for Salk Village, coming from downstate. This is going into their budget. Nine hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and two dollars. This is what our lobbyists, this is what I... This is just going down, meeting with our representatives, going down, talking to the people, and, um, being a nuisance, basically. Sitting in their office, asking them this. What is it they ask? What can we do right now to help? These are some of the things that we can do. This money's gonna be... We've had money like this before, never this amount, but we got money. But what happened is a lot of times when we get it, I was talking to the permanent works director today, it drives up quick. You get it, you ask for it, you try to spend it, and the next thing you know, "Oh, wait a minute, don't spend that because we haven't got it." So, right now, we're aggressively trying to get these things taken care of. A lot of it is infrastructure. It is on here. A lot of it is infrastructure. So, we're hoping to do some things. We gotta put our hands together to try to see what we can best do for the village, but it's earmarked. Again, earmarked. It's not for salaries, it's not for hiring, it's for getting these jobs done. Hopefully, uh, we can get this started as soon as possible. I will say this, I went through the whole list, of municipalities. We're right up there. Our neighbored only got three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, there are some that, um... There are some municipalities got a couple of mail, you know, but that I didn't understand why they furnished a building, but they did. So, but now, this year, I know what I had to do. Next year, when I go down, I'll have more. Hopefully, we can give more, we can ask more, and we can do something. But I want them to see what we're gonna do with this. So, when I do go down, like I say, okay, last year, you helped us get this money. This is what we did with it, now we need this. So, I just wanted to bring that to the board and let everyone know that, uh, it does pay to, uh... It does pay to, uh, pay. And that's what I did. Uh, also, the update on the gas and wash. Um, I'm hearing different closing dates. I'm hearing end of this month, I'm hearing beginning of the next month. It looks like they're going...coming along. Um, there's signs out there for people that want jobs in a different area and a different, um, store that are there. Use those phone numbers, um, call if you're looking for a job. And, you know, don't wait till the last minute till they open up and say, "I need a job." You know, they probably will be filled. Not saying that in the meantime that they're not gonna need some more people. So, people looking for jobs. And, um, I'll let everyone know when the opening day is. I'll let the trustees, I'll give them a formal invitation as soon as I find out when the opening day will be. And I'll let everyone know. We were going to have a swearing there, but we were not able to do that. It was a little long, so moving along, um... Village Clerk, come out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing that I would want to draw to the attention of the trustees and especially the newer ones. Uh, back in November, we signed, um, on for some general obligation bonds for Series 2019A and B. It has been quite a while, but know that they are on fast track right now for actually implementing or finalizing those bond series. I have asked, and Mayor, I copied you on the email, if someone, Charles Durham from Ice Miller, if he could come and just give you guys an update, those of you who were here already. But as I said, that was in November. But then some of the newer ones, uh, just so that you can have information also. It is anticipated, though, that the bonds will be finalized before they would have an opportunity to actually get here. Oh, they will be here. Okay, so they will be here next week to give you a brief update. And, um, that's all I wanted to bring to your attention.
Village Engineer is not here. Uh, Treasury Report, Mr. Finch.
Thank you, Mayor Boy, Madam Clerk. With regards to my Treasury Report, the available cash that we have on hand in the specialty fund is a million fifty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The available cash in the general fund as of the 7th of June is eight hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars for a total of one million eight hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars that is available to pay payroll in the current accounts payable list. Pretty much, that's all that I have for my Treasury Report. Quickly, I just wanna comment, uh, piggyback on what the mayor said as far as the, um, roughly nine hundred thousand dollars that is being provided by the state. I was down there with the mayor when he talked to the legislators about that. So, I think it's a good thing that, um, the village is getting it. As you guys know, we preparing the budget. So, um, like the mayor was saying, we have to be cognizant how it's spent. Hopefully, some of the items that you, as residents, been asking about for the last, I guess, at least the last three months since I've been here, can get taken care of. But, um, also, I understand that the money is just put out there right now. I don't believe in spending money until it actually hit a bank account. So, again, like I always keep saying, just be patient. And once the money's getting in, I'm pretty sure we can figure out how to get it spent. But, um, don't look for things to happen like next week or right away because they haven't been, um, pretty...pretty much released. Um, as far as that, that's the end of my Treasury Report.
Okay, uh, reports to the departments. Again, Mr. Finch, Finance Administration.
Trustees, Mayor, and Madam Clerk, you guys got a copy of the final accounts payable list, which shows that, um, payroll was a hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. The accounts payable for this week is a hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Pretty much, that's the accounts payable, and that's the payroll for this week. I do wanna quickly, um, piggyback on what Madam Clerk was saying with reference to the bonds for the new trustees. When you guys meet with Kane McKenna, keep in mind that time is of the essence because if you've been watching the stock market and all the tariffs and everything that's going on, um, with the economy, the bond interest rate fluctuates. So, the sooner we do this, the sooner we can take advantage of interest rate. Unfortunately, it seems like things have dragged out with the council making decisions. So, this is something I advise and I ask you guys to be very cognizant of and don't prolong it. Because at the end of the day, the refinancing of a bond, it's pretty much no difference to refinancing your house where the... Where it says that you get money back at a low interest rate, and that extra money allows you to do things in the future. So, um, pretty much, that's it, just be mindful that time is of essence getting this approved. Um, other than that, that's my, uh, end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Fire Department, Catherine Sennaway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Fire Department responded to twenty-five calls for service for the period from May twenty-third through June sixth. The most serious was an annual assist for a gunshot victim at the Marathon. As the weather gets warmer, we would like to remind everyone, practice water safety. Please do not leave young children alone near the swimming pools. Our Fire Department will be held under annual golf outing on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, at Lincoln Oaks Golf Course. And as you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, Kevin Luther did receive his Fire Officer One and his Advanced Fire Fighter Certificates, which will be presented at another meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police Department Chief Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for the period between, um, May twenty-ninth and today, the Police Department received and answered four hundred forty-eight calls for service. Uh, during that same time period, we also made thirteen arrests. We had scheduled, uh, some accommodations to award tonight, but, uh, we went ahead and scheduled those, uh, I'll put it back on the, uh, on my report next time, so. Uh, probably within the next thirty days.
Thank you.
That is my report, sir.
Thank you. Um, Public Works, Mr. Kevin Well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few quick items here. Um, repairs are being, uh, completed at Village Hall, we have some lightings and valves to replace, uh, we've had the issues ordering some parts, there's a lot of lighting systems in this building, um. Unfortunately, they're at the end of their lives now, the ten and twelve-year period, so we're gonna be doing some repairs on those. Um, we have some battery, um, backups in those lights that have to be replaced too, and those are pretty expensive. Um, we also have, um, we're working at the Fire Department right now, we have some minor electrical problems over there, we replaced some lights that were purchased under the amended budget. Um, we're working on one of the, um, heater units in there, it looks like it's got a cracked heat exchanger, we'll give recommendations to the Fire Department for the budget cycle. Um, we're also getting ready for the Public Works Building, uh, under the amended budget items, we have an abatement out there to be made, plus some repairs to the building to do some upgrades, and a final paint job will come. Um, some of that stuff will start in the next couple of weeks. Um, staff has been out, um, cutting all the village locations due to the rain this year and the early start of the season, we are definitely behind. Um, the grass is getting higher in our detention areas, um, those will be the last locations that we, uh, address. Um, because the public areas right now are growing so fast, we're cutting them every so many days. These locations in town that we cut, there are fifty-five locations, uh, well into the seventy-acre amount cut. And, uh, the staff right now, we're trying to hire our part-time help on, um, right now, we do not have any other applicants to look into right now, so if anybody knows of any person eighteen or older that wants to cut some grass and help us out. Please fill out an application at the Village Hall, or go online and get a copy and turn it in at the Village Hall. Um, staff has also been out with the complaints of podo patching, uh, the north side of town, we're trying to get some assistance, uh, that didn't happen at this time. So, we moved into the, uh, section where Orion and Merrill is, and we're heading right now west. But as of today, we've used, this is three days working in that section, ten point five tons of, of, of patch work right now, and this is all permanent, or permanent material, but temporary podo material at this point. Staff has also been out elevating a few of the locations for the dig locations that we've been in the past, some of these locations are out a year and a half. Um, I asked for patience at this time, again, the dirt is wet, it's hard to move around, it's clay in our area, so it's not, it doesn't level off easy enough, we cannot get a wood tiller entered to do some of the work. So, hopefully, next week, according to the weatherman, we're gonna have maybe a spring of days, four or five dry days, that will get us more into the landscaping and hopefully finalize that. The concrete and asphalt, those will come in afterwards, but we're trying to get at least the landscaping taken care of for the residents. Uh, the street sweeper, uh, will start its, its June cycle on the seventeenth to the twenty-first, um, please don't park on the streets during garbage day, that's when we'll try to be in the area. Uh, this isn't exact science, we do get behind in some sections, so we do not complete them, um, during the, the garbage pickup cycle, but we will complete them, and we will still drive through the sections. Um, tree, trees in towns is another condition, um, we have, uh, all around town, we roughly have about a hundred and eighty of them left. Um, recently, in the last week, we've cut down six more trees, we have stumped them, we have a stumper now, so we will be stumping the trees right after we're done. Um, of the six trees, we still have three of them that have to be stumped yet, and we will be moving into the hazard sections, which we have, uh, specific addresses of hazard trees. And we'll be working on the other trees as we're in those sections. The last thing is, staff has repaired, uh, a fire hydrant, temporarily repaired a fire hydrant at eighteen twenty-nine Sock Trail. Um, exposing the main valve to shut off the fire hydrant, found out the top operating section of the hydrant, or the valve was rotted away, that part has been replaced. The hole has to settle off a little bit for us to do the, uh, the hydrant repair, which is the, and then we will repair the rest of the hydrant, and it will be back in service. And the final item here, it's not on my report, but I want to add it because it's a concern around town. We have some streetlight issues in town, um, definitely due to infrastructure, our infrastructure in town is older wiring systems. Um, due to that, we're having some power fluctuations when these lights go to start, there are basically a computer, uh, system, low voltage, and it's high voltage going into low voltage. So, they're safety tested, they shut off when there's too much voltage, or not enough voltage. So, at some locations, you may notice the streetlight will be on during the daytime, these are areas that we're having problems with that specific light or power source coming into that light. But if we turn the light on, the light will stay on at the point we turn it on, it will not shut back off, so the power will be constant. So, if you do see them lit, it's just us temporarily trying to light the light in a section right now, until we can do some more permanent repairs. And that ends my report.
Thank you, um, did you say that, um, you're still looking for, um, some help?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Reports of trustees, standing committees and cabinets, uh, trustee Gary Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. The next Safety Committee meeting will be November, I mean, check, make that, the eighteenth of June at eleven AM here in the Rotunda. And I'd also like to thank the village for allowing me to go to the two seminars I went to this last week, SSMA and the IML Conference, thank you, that completes my report.
Public Service Committee trustee Bernice Brewer.
No, report, Mr. Mayor.
Budget and Finance Committee trustee Roger Grant.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I do plan to have a Budget and Finance meeting next Wednesday at seven o'clock. Uh, Mr. Finch, uh, will we still have the Department head meeting this Saturday, or no?
You said Department head meeting?
Yeah.
It's gonna be. No, not this Saturday.
The twenty-second?
Yes.
Twenty-second. And that's all I have.
Thank you, I'm, I'm guessing that you're talking about the budget.
The budget.
Yes, the budget.
Okay. Uh, that's it?
What day is it on?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday the twenty-second, what time did you want to have it, trustee?
I remember last time, last, last year, it took a, a few hours, uh, to have the meeting, I think we were here like four or five hours, I believe. We had to go through each Department head, so I would say the earlier the better, but it's up to, to the whole board to decide what time you want to have it.
It's up to you guys, I'm flexible.
Yeah, I mean. The fifteenth is this Saturday. No, so we, we said the twenty-second, uh, but that, I mean, twenty-ninth, I just think it has to be on a Saturday in order to accommodate everybody.
Long the budget is approb- sorry, long the appropriation is approved by the end of July, that's the goal.
And then we still have to, we still have to put it out there for thirty days as well, don't forget that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I got a busy on the twenty-second, my husband's having a very special birthday, I'm planning on being with him all day.
I'll put it this way, I'll, uh, I'll hold the trustees, um, and give them three days, twenty-second, twenty-ninth. Or two days, literally, because we have to get this, we have to put it out there, and then once we do, because I have to make sure the Department heads come. They have to be there, they have to know their dates, I'm sorry, their time. So, um, what we'll do is I'll, I'll put two dates up. Get it disseminated to the, uh, trustees, and the more, the more that can come on that date, the, they will have it. Uh, we can't wait, uh, because we have to have it out for thirty days after it's been talked about, so it's gonna be. Because if appropriations is not passed, we can't pay bills. Okay, um. Trustee, uh, Sherri Jazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm still looking for volunteers to sit on the Housing, uh, Committee with me, so if you're interested, if you could leave your, uh, name and number with the girls up front, I'm sure they'll get it to me. Or you could email me at sjazinski@sockvillage.org, thank you very much.
Okay, Ordnance Review Committee trustee Linda Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the next Ordnance Review Committee meeting will be here in the Rotunda on June seventeenth, which is on a Monday at four PM. And that ends that. Um, I just want to ask a quick question, I know it's been asked of us about this prevailing wage, is it an ordinance that we have to put into place?
It's the ordinance that we have to, we have to actually vote on it, yes.
Okay, do we have a time limit on this?
Yes, uh, it was already, but we still have time, I mean, the time, I'm sorry, the deadline is passed, but we still.
Okay, because I just don't want that to get forgotten. And also, Mr. Mayor, that is great news that the state's finally going to give us some money. Now, let's see what taxes we have to pay for the state.
Like was said, um, when I say it, it's the accounting, yeah.
Yes, but thank you, thank you for that report, and that ends mine.
Thank you, um, trustee Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree, thank you for your due diligence and your trips downstate to get the funding for the village that is much needed, we do appreciate that. On, um, June twentieth at five PM, the Special, uh, Public Events Committee will be meeting. I was going to meet this week, but unfortunately, I have a family emergency, so I will not be able to meet on the thirteenth, we'll be meeting on June twentieth at five PM in the Rotunda. On August seventeenth, we have the prescription drug, um, and the paper recycling and the electronics recycling, so gather together all your prescription drugs and, at August seventeenth. Outside the Village Hall, you can bring one TV at that time, we'll have flyers on the table probably next week with the exact times. And also, in the middle of September, we're taking the seniors to Brookfield Zoo, anybody who would like to come to the zoo, uh, those tickets will be, uh, donated by Commissioner Donna Miller. And last week, I, I mentioned social media, which the elephant in the room, and I didn't have the social media ordinance in front of me. I'm not gonna read the whole ordinance, but I think the reason why we need to understand the impact of social media, and the impact of how these board, board meetings are conducted. And it's not just your fault, and it's just not our fault, everybody is party to why these board meetings are what they are. But as far as the social media policy that the Board adopted, number fourteen zero zero six, it was adopted and advisable in the best interest of the village. To establish guidelines for village employees' use of social media. The guidelines are decide, designed to assist village employees in using social media in a manner that does not compromise the village's ability to provide governmental services to village residents. If you look further into the ordinance, little highlights of what this ordinance is trying to do. At the Village of Sock Village, we understand that social media can be fun and rewarding, a way to share your life and opinions with friends, however, there are guidelines that we should follow. You should know and follow the rules, inappropriate postings that may include discriminatory remarks, harassment, threats of violence, or similar inappropriate or unlawful conduct. Will not be tolerated and may be subject to disciplinary action, up to and including termination. Be respectful on social media, be honest and accurate on social media. Never post any information or rumors that you know to be false about the Village of Sock Village, fellow employees, members, customers, suppliers, or people working on behalf of the Village of Sock Village. Post only appropriate and respectful content, retaliation is prohibited. Now, that's just a few things in the social media ordinance, and like the mayor stated earlier, and I totally agree, nobody's here for a popularity contest, believe me. I was on this Board for eight years, and I saw the hostility, and I lived the hostility, and the last thing I ever thought I was gonna do was to put myself back in this position. So, trust me, I'm, I'm not here to be popular, because we've only just begun. And if you don't like me now, you're not gonna like me later, because one thing about me, if I see something that needs to get done, or something that needs to be addressed, it will be brought out. But one thing about you, what you don't know is, I see a lot of new faces in this room, you haven't been here, you haven't seen it, you don't know. And if you don't give us a chance, but I, and, and again, don't give us a chance, but when it all boils down to it, I hope that you take it with the vein that it's given. We're not trying to, we're not trying to upset any apple carts here, we do want to, and you can, and again, the audience is palpable to what we're doing too. Are you gonna be respectful too, or are we always going to fight? Either we're gonna always fight, or we're going to compromise and try to work together, but if you're gonna ignore what's going on, then that's wrong. Seven people were, actually, eight people were elected to this Board. You didn't elect just one person to run your community. When you go to the polls, you go to appoint and elect a mayor, a clerk, and six trustees. If you only needed one person to run the village, you would only be voting for a mayor. But there's a reason why, when you go to the polling place, there are eight people every two, every four years, and seven people. However, I'm sorry, I'm breaking it down wrong. The point of the matter is, the point of the matter is, when you go to the polls to elect trustees and a mayor, it's because everybody needs to work together to, for the common good of the residents. And if you voted for me and you're sorry that you voted for me, I'm sorry for you, because the reason you voted for me is, I'm not gonna let stuff happen that's not supposed to be happening. I'm gonna uncover things that have been done in the past two years, the things that you couldn't see, and the things that I couldn't see, but you're angry now. But I can only hope, when the time comes, that you won't be angry with me anymore. And if you are still angry, think about it, are you, do you have an open mind? Because I have an open mind, and we just came back from an executive session where we actually kind of worked well together, where we actually had a little bit of compromise. And you don't know it because you didn't see it, again, you didn't see it, but one thing about it, we had compromised. And I believe that we can continue to compromise, but we are not going to leave things covered, we're going to uncover. And you might not like it, and you might not understand it, but my phone number at the Village Hall is seven five three five one two five. And I am more than happy to speak to any resident, because believe me when I tell you, I can think of a lot of better places to be on a Tuesday night than sitting here. And listening to people argue and fight when I know we have way too much work to do. But I put myself back in this position, because you matter, and I've said it all along, and if you don't believe it. Come to the Village Hall and meet with me, call me, my cell phone number is seven oh eight three five one eight nine two two, I am accessible. And I'm here for the residents, believe me.
Reports of committees and commissions, uh, senior advisory council, Mr. and Ms. Martin.
Mayor, trustees, uh, next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is this Thursday, June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, all of us, at five PM. Uh, we have game night, uh, every first and third Friday, and the senior center come out, please. Uh, on a Friday, invite the seniors for vehicles and other games. Also, we're having GIN Care here, uh, having a health fair on June eighteenth, and GIN Care is gonna sponsor it. And we do have flyers out, uh, advertisement, please tell all your seniors, they're gonna do blood pressure. And they're gonna, uh, the blood sugar screenings, and they got a lot of giveaways for the seniors. Also, I want to thank all the seniors that went on our, uh, first casino trip, and, uh, thank you all for coming out, looked like everybody had a good time. Also, I missed on the report, they're ready to start, uh, Funko, Funko. On June seventeenth from four to nine in the senior center, so all you all that do Funko, uh, welcome to come out, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, finished business, I'll accept the motion to approve the ordinance for a liquor license for a banking facility.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee, um. Oh, trustee Bell, I'm sorry, second by trustee Brewer, any questions? Madam Clerk, please call her.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. New business, I'll accept the motion to approve the payroll and the accounts payable and total disbursement of any amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and two dollars.
So moved.
Have a motion, you'll have a second. Okay, the motion was lost, or lack of second, so, um.
Mr. Mayor?
We were, yes?
I'd like to make a motion. To, um, pay accounts payable with the exception of, um, invoice.
No, the motion was lost.
No, the motion was lost. I'd like to make a motion to accept accounts payable with the exception of five invoices. Uh, the invoices are, one from Barnes and Thornburg in the amount of $2,759.50. The second invoice is for Dr. Strata, invoice 1047, in the amount of $2,295,000. The third invoice for Dr. Alicia Strata for professional human services, invoice 1049, for $2,295,000. The fourth invoice is for Dr. Alicia Strata for professional human resources, union negotiation, invoice 148, for $1,360. And also, the fifth invoice for Dr. Alicia Strata for professional human service, union negotiation, invoice 150, for $1,360.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Williams.
Question. Uh, Mr. Mayor, what's the, uh, the reason to block five of these invoices? I feel that if Barnes and Thornburg or Dr. Strata provided us a service, they should get paid. That's just plain simple, I work 40 hours a week, I get a paycheck. So is there a reason why these are not being asked to not be paid?
Trustee Grant, on the one, um, for Barnes and Thornburg, there are no details at all on that invoice. All it says is fees with that amount. So that's why I would not want it on there, because I, I reviewed the invoices of that, and there's nothing. And what I look at is, even in your home, if you get a bill and there's nothing, no details, you're going to question it before you pay it. So that's how I feel about this one.
Uh, can I ask trustee Brewer, because I think she's the one who made the motion, so can I hear your thoughts? Because, uh, I believe I did see the invoice, and it doesn't have exact detail, but it does have a general description of what it did, so there was a description of what the services provided were.
Well, trustee Grant, after we approved the accounts payable, and we had, we go into discussions for Dr. Strata and Barnes and Thornburgs, uh, you could ask that question, and I'll be able to provide you with some information on that, but I would like it to be voted on separately, the last, uh, these five invoices.
So these will be voted on separately, so you're going to make another motion after this one to approve all these five invoices?
Well, individually, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Okay, you mentioned that you saw an invoice, and it mentioned that there was work being done. I have the copy of the invoice, and I'm just asking...
I didn't mention that, you said, you said I mentioned.
Mr. Grant did.
Oh.
No, I didn't say you did, I'm sorry. I'm just making a point. Um, I actually do have the invoice. As a trustee, we are responsible for your money, and I'd like to know how many people in the audience would approve to pay an invoice that says, "For legal services rendered in connection with the above matter for the period ending April 30th, 2019, as described on the attached detail." The attached detail on the next page says, "Fees for services, $2,759." And it was stated previously, if you got a bill like this at your home with absolutely no detail, no detail whatsoever, would you pay this? In my home, I would not pay this, in your home...
Trustee, trustee, you're addressing the board, not the audience? This is, you got a motion on the floor, you should be addressing the board, not the audience.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, in my home, I would not pay this, okay? This invoice has absolutely no detail. The invoices that, that trustee Brewer is talking about have absolutely no detail. I believe, moving forward until we have detail. If these invoices come back with detail, because I believe this is the attorney firm that charges $500 an hour, and I'd like to know what they did for $500 an hour to get to $2,759.50. Until they could show me what they did, that this village and these residents should pay that much money, Mr. Mayor, then I agree, I'm not voting to approve this or any invoice without detail, thank you.
Okay, um, on the item that was voted on, the five different items, there was a motion on the floor on the second not to pay Barnes and Noble.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, should we take the accounts payable portion first, or is we going to...
You made a motion to not pay them.
No, I'm talking about, I said... I said the second emotion to...
That's the motion that's on the floor.
Pay accounts payable.
Thank you, I know that. I know that she made a motion to not pay these five different items.
Excuse, Mr. Mayor, can I ask the attorney about? Okay.
Okay, alright. My question is, so, we can know, as, as, as paying bills, what is it that you want from these different vendors? So you're saying that it's not itemized enough, so what more itemization do you want? But I, we need to, we need to know, because I don't want to put this village in harm's way of not paying. So what is it that, what, what is it that the board, during this motion, want? You want more itemization, what does that mean?
I'd like to refer this to the attorney. I asked the question, Mr. McGrath, about how I should state this motion, and I do believe I said, "I would like to pay accounts payable with the exception of the five different invoices." And I think that we should do the accounts payable first, and then go on and, and vote on the other five separately.
And during the way, the motion is second, if it accounts payable, with the exception of the items that you stated, accounts payable will be paid without those items being paid. There's been questions about those items, and then it would be approved, or voted on, the motion rather, that's been seconded. So if accounts payable will be paid, less of the items that you hold of, the accounts payable, and then you can proceed if you want to, the board will...
Yes.
So we're not able to ask what it is they're looking for, just don't pay this?
No, you can't.
That's all I was asking, that's all I was asking, is what more itemization, so we can inform these vendors that submitted these bills? What more itemization does the board want, and that's all I'm asking.
If the board is, if the mind is, you're paying accounts payable and not those items, because they want more direction or details, then they should advise you and then...
That's all I'm asking, so I can know what this, go back and look to the, to these vendors, that's right, that's all I'm asking.
For the board to vote, make the, uh, individual, after voting, or if you just have for the next meeting, uh, basically, not request to, uh, the official...
I'm not looking, I'm just...
Not, not vote.
Yes, that, or, that's, that's on the phone, calling. In regards to accounts payable.
Paying accounts payable first, new individual.
Okay. So you're asking, okay. Moved and seconded, uh, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Josette Green?
Uh, for accounts payable, yes.
Trustee Todd?
Are we voting now that we're removing those five?
No, we...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes, the accounts payable minus those invoices. Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Okay, before I go into trouble to the next one, I need to know what you're looking for, so these people can find out why they're not being paid. So you're asking for what you see in the, uh, in the ordinance that wasn't passed yet? Okay, but we haven't passed it yet, but you're asking... I mean, I'm saying, you're asking for what the ordinance asked. So you want those different things to be, you want it itemized as was stated in the ordinance that hasn't been passed yet, that's coming down, that'll be item number D. So I'm asking, is that what you're asking for, that...
I have a comment, but I...
I need to find out why these, why these vendors, they're going to ask why they're not paid, and we have to give them answers. So I'm asking, is that what it is? I'm asking the board. Is that what they're looking for? You're looking for more itemization? And the itemization you're looking for is what's stated in that ordinance?
I'm looking, um, I want to make a comment on this particular, uh, is it for us? Yes.
Basically, we're asking for like punching time clock. For eight hours, I drag my fortify on the shot.
Vendors don't punch a time clock.
Well, on the one that you're talking about with the attorney, that's unacceptable. You don't tell us the fee, you're not telling us what it's for, you don't tell us how long, uh, and you worked on it, it's just a bill for, what it was, a $2,700. There needs to be more details on that.
Okay, I'm, that's all, I'm...
That's what I'm saying on that.
I'm asking, I'm asking the question, are you asking for more detailed information? So when that's presented, okay, I just want to know.
Right, once we get into...
And then, and then, um, so that's on all the invoices, that's all I had.
For this particular invoice on Barnes and Thornburgs, the reason I want some additional information is because we, it hasn't been itemized, nor have, I don't think any of the trustees here have voted on expenditures for this, um, this particular amount of money. I have, um, I don't know why Barnes and Thornburg was never brought before the board to ask, can he do this sort of thing? Uh, we spending out $2,759.50, nobody asked us about it. Uh, next thing you know, uh, as I know it, this particular invoice is for a four-year request. That, I think is a little ridiculous for us to pay that kind of money for a four-year request.
Since, since you do have...
I have the floor, Mr. Mayor, and I finished talking.
I'm trying to alleviate...
I have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
What is that?
I have the floor, Mr. Mayor, I haven't finished my statement. Okay, for Barnes and Thornburgs, uh, this for $2,759 is actually for a four-year request where the mayor is objecting to what's responding to it. And, uh, first and second law, like I said, this money was never approved by the board of trustees, and you have taken upon yourself to, uh, uh, charge $2,759.50 for this, and I, I don't think it's fair, I don't think we should be paying this kind of money just for a four-year request, that's exactly what four-year request for, freedom of information request. You cannot deny a resident or a trustee any documents related to Soft Village business. And this is wasting our money, saying we're going to pay all this money to fight for your request. The information is available, why not just pass it on? It's simple, it's the law, and it's legal.
Are you finished?
I'm finished with it.
Okay, first of all, I was trying to stop you, for the simple reason that you just put yourself in harm's way, the lawyer said it right there. The law, the suit is against defending what you're suing the village. You should not even be involved in voting on that, because it's, you should recuse yourself from voting on that, because the lawsuit is against you. I'm sorry, against this board filed by yourself. And I told you back then that I was going to go get whoever to, 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 to defend that. But you kept on, I was trying to stop you, because you have no, you should not even vote on anything that contains that particular lawsuit.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, this has everything to do with money, I don't know what you're talking about.
I wait for you to talk, I wait for you to talk. Now, as far as, if the board wants to, that's fine. But when you made that statement that, you know, it's frivolous and all that, that's what the courts do. They make that decision, not you. You filed the lawsuit against this board and this village. You did what you wanted to do. Now it's up to the village and this board to defend that lawsuit. You can call it whatever, but for you to even be involved in, in voting the money in and out for that, that is wrong, totally wrong. That's totally wrong, so all I...
I haven't voted on anything to...
You made a motion to not pay.
Yes, the whole of it.
You shouldn't have done that.
I can make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
You shouldn't have done that.
You know, there is no...
Your vote is right there, talk to your legal counsel.
Mr. Counselor?
Mr. Counselor.
It says, uh, Mr. McGrath. Is there some reason why I can't make a motion?
There's some reason.
To pay this particular invoice? I'm going to make a motion, I didn't say do it, I said make a motion.
Any of the trustees that you all know, you're inspired to the, uh, the purse reach of the money of the village, you can make a motion, uh, pull certain items from the accounts payable certainly. Uh, I would suggest that you don't talk about the merits of your case, I'm not proud of that case, I represent you on that case, and/or do I represent the village in that case? There's two separate law writs, I haven't seen any of the meetings, I don't know what's going on other than some of the current statutes, based upon the findings that I saw. Uh, Barnes and Thornburg were disqualified today, court extensions have been issued to the complaint. I know they have filed, uh, a name, other than that, I don't know what their defense is going to be, if there's a, kind of, about what your claims are. Are you taking a motion to pull anything off the accounts payable, that's certainly in your term of view, as being an elected trustee of the board to use your tools in purse reach?
Mr. Mayor, I agree, we're talking about litigation here, and we shouldn't be. We should be talking about finances, we're in accounts payable right now. So we're not dealing with the, what the merit of the bill is. The mayor asked a question, what detail do we want to see on the bill so they can get paid? My question was, or my statement from the beginning was, the bill said, "See the next page for detail," and there was no detail. So I can only assume, I worked in a law firm, every 15 minutes, there's a bill. You talk to them three minutes, you get billed 15 minutes, in 15-minute increments. What I'm saying is, on the back page, it says, "See the detail," there's no detail. And I understand that this is the law firm that's charging $500, so I would like to know, what did you do for us for $500? But I'm not going to speak to the merits of the case. And as far as the other invoices that are being pulled, in my opinion, it says the same thing every week, and it's very broad. I want to know, who did you talk to? What did you do? How did you facilitate this? This is what consultants do. Consultants don't hand in broad invoices, they tell you exactly what they did. This particular consultant has charged $850 a week since July of 2018 for negotiations or union discussions. What have you done 10 hours a week since July of 2018? I think it's a good question. I don't think that we shouldn't be able, and you're asking, Mr. Mayor, what do we want? I want to know what was done for every hour for the $850, because for the five days that she was on administrative paid leave, that $850 went to $1,360 for two weeks, because those five days caused her to get behind. So now we have to pay $1,360. So I definitely want to know what was done on these invoices. So I hope that I've answered your question, but I do agree, we need to be careful about what we talk about in open session.
To, to finish my, um, I have a comment.
You already passed.
No, I have a comment on the other two invoices for Dr. Strata. Mr. Finch is not here.
You voted not to, you voted not to pay them.
I didn't vote not to pay them, I didn't say it. I have a question.
You just voted, the board just voted to not pay those five invoices. It was unanimous vote, five, six, and seven. So what else is there? What else can you bring it up?
I want to know...
The motion was seconded and it was voted on.
I have a question, this, a comment. Mr. Mayor, uh, I have a comment for, uh, Dr. Strata's, uh, invoices that they submitted, uh, 1047, 1049, and on the accounts payable, yes, paid AD, what does that mean?
I have no idea.
Well, that's my question.
Okay, but then, you're asking, I got said before, when did you get this accounts payable? Today? Did you get this today?
Do you have an answer to what is paid AD for? Do you have a, do you have an answer to this? Do you have an answer to that?
I just got to...
There you go, well, then I just, I just question too.
What does that mean? I don't do that, what does that mean?
That, that means that you don't know what you're talking about. Do you know what paid AD is? What does that mean? I'm asking you the question, what is paid... I'm asking you the question, what does paid A.D. mean?
Mr. Mayor, I could answer that question if you like. Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Right now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respect, but I'm also gonna ask for respect. I'm not gonna sit here and this and all this and I'm, we're here to do business, not to grandstand, not to say, or whatever. If you don't want to do something, you vote on it, let's move on. That's all I'm saying. You said you don't want to pay those particular five invoices. All I ask, so if you go back to get the information, what is it that you're looking for? You told me what you're looking for. Why are we going further? What's the reason to keep going and all this and everything?
I didn't tell you what I was looking for.
But the only thing I'm saying, I hope it's not what I'm thinking of.
I want to know what paid A.D. is.
What did you get ready to say, trustee?
Actually, I did speak to the accounts payable department, and it's on, listen, on the accounts payable report, the name, and it says P.A.I., and it appears to look like it's paid, when it says paid leave. You can't print the whole line on the accounts payable report. I did question that, but if we could have seen the entire line, it says paid leave. Because I did take the time to go through the accounts payable.
That's why I asked the trustee, when did she get this? And I'm sure this was gotten, this looked like it was June sixth or whatever, I don't know. Okay, next item.
Well, I thought that we were gonna vote individually on those five invoices.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. The next item is, I want to, because it was stated that you would vote individually, so I would like to take a motion. I'm sorry, entertain a motion.
See, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but she said that we will vote on them individually after the accounts payable. Right, but then she also mentioned that she would vote on them individually, that's what she said. So we need to vote on the five invoices individually. No, 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 but she just said that she was gonna vote on them individually, she just said that, she just said it. So she needs to make a motion that we vote on those five invoices individually, because that's what she said we were gonna do. So I voted yes, and accounts payable, now we need to vote on the five individually, so we can vote on that as well.
So are you making a motion to?
I'm not making, trustee Brewer needs to make the motion, because she said that's what we would do.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
I already made the motion, somebody is second.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee.
You vote on who second?
Second by trustee Grant. That the five different invoices are to be voted on separately. I'll take a motion for the first one, which will be Barnes and Thornburgs for legal services in the amount of twenty-seven fifty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Juzinski.
Yes. To remove?
No, we would have done, this is.
I see you guys got me.
No. This is, this is, this is to approve the invoice for Barnes and Thornburgs, because we already removed them, and now we're gonna pay them individually.
No, we're not.
Trustee Todd.
No, not until we get more details.
Trustee Williams.
No.
Trustee Hale.
Nope.
Trustee Brewer.
I'm staying.
Yes.
Motion is being carried, Dr. Lisa Stroud, invoice number ten forty-seven. I'll accept the motion to pay. Yes, to pay, you can always say no. I'll accept the motion to pay.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Brewer.
Question.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, in event that this, or any of the other four are not approved, how does that play out when we have the contract?
Contract is so much mandatory.
So it doesn't matter, we vote yes or no, because she'll get paid regardless?
I mean, she's, it's in our contract, that if she doesn't get paid, that she will, she'll get her money. That was in the contract. She'll get paid anyway, that's in the contract.
No.
If you hold up her pay, read the contracts, those are the guidelines. And that's what it say, that's why he's asking the question. Well, that was in the contract, so. Unless you want to talk to her and ask her, to tell her that, you know, but right now, if you vote not to pay her, that's what's in there. Is there anything else? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
No.
All right, motion's carried. Invoice number, for Dr. Stroud, invoice number ten forty-nine.
Motion was not carried.
Motion.
Motion was no, so it could mean the motion was carried. It didn't say affirmative, this motion is carried, no.
Motion failed because nobody voted to.
I, I'm sorry, invoice ten forty-nine.
So moved, Madam. Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Can you make, can you clarify the motion that we could do a little bit better? Because it just, you just say motion, it says not to pay or pay or.
That's what you said, you said you don't want to pay her. What other clarity is it? I mean, you said you don't want to pay her. So you're voting not to pay her?
Yeah, make that clear.
You're voting not to pay her?
The motion, no, we need to stop this, because even.
Well, that's what you said.
No, you took the five items off of accounts payable to vote on them separately, to approve them. Either you say yes or no, when it's your turn to vote. So the motion is to pay them. And then if you don't want to pay them, say no. If you do want to pay them, say yes. But the motion clearly states, we pulled five off of accounts payable, somebody wanted to vote on them separately. We're voting on them separately now.
Thanks for that. That's what I stated, I said.
Thank you, tried to help you there.
Are there any questions on the, on the last motion, ten forty-nine? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Williams.
No, not until there's more detail.
No.
No.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee.
No.
Wait a minute.
Ten to five.
No, until there's more detail.
Okay. Next item is, is.
You're not a trustee, Madam Clerk.
Is invoice number one forty-eight for Dr. Stroud. I'll entertain a motion. Moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Bell. Any questions?
No.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Hale.
No.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
No.
Trustee Todd.
No.
Trustee Williams.
No, not until there's more detail.
Last one is item number one fifty, from Dr. Stroud, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Bell. I'm sorry, trustee Bell, second by trustee Grant. To, to pay, as I stated before, this particular invoice. Madam Clerk?
There's a comment?
Why?
Go ahead, what comment?
On this particular invoice. Dr. Stroud, the consultant, Dr. Stroud, has never been part of the board, the board for advice and consent. There's no position or consulting position that has been hired with advice or consent of the board. There was no job created for this particular position. The previous board approved seventeen hours, yet hired when she was paid for seventeen point four hours. She was never approved for that amount of hours by the board, by the previous board. This has been an ongoing conflict that has not been resolved between the board and the mayor. Either she's supposed to be paid seventeen hours or seventeen point four, five hours. Either she's been approved and with advice and consent of the board, which she has not been, not been approved or consented with, by the board. Therefore, in fact, I think she's in violation of the several Illinois state statutes that provides for the mayor to appoint consultants, but it has to be with advice and consent of the board, which he has never been. And that's the end of my comment.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
No, not unless there's more detail.
What happened, yes or no?
No.
Yes.
Next item. Motion to accept the recommendation for the award for the MFTCDVG project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Hale.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Carried, item number C. I'll accept the motion to override item number one. I'm sorry, I accept the motion to change the, the, I'm sorry, I accept the motion to amend item C.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee, was it Bell?
Yeah.
I don't know, it jumps me down that way. Any, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. I'll accept the motion on the number, on number one, we're gonna do these one by one? I need, I need a motion to, to accept number one, which is the ordinance number nineteen dash oh one one, which creates the office of the village administrator. I need to, I need a motion to either override the veto or.
You didn't veto that.
The motion is to override the veto, right? Correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, because I didn't veto it, but everybody.
The veto was handed into.
Okay, well then, okay.
Attorney as a signed veto.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Todd, to override, I don't even know why I'm saying it, but I didn't veto it, but to.
Had a signed veto.
Madam Clerk, any questions?
Well, I do have a question, I have a comment, excuse me, because there's a lot of confusion on this one. The mayor did not verbalize this veto, but the veto was signed and sent to the attorney. So when it was signed and sent to the attorney, it was a valid veto that needs to be overridden tonight. So whether he verbalized it correctly last time, it was sent to the attorney, signed. So it makes it a valid veto. So yes, we have a motion to override this veto. Just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Juzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Hale.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Motion's carried. Is there anything else that want to be brought up on item C? Item D, motion to approve the village of Saw Village initiating accounts payable policy on behalf of the village board. I didn't skip anything. I asked, I asked the question, and it was given, the answer was given.
They amended.
I didn't. I didn't ask, I asked the question, and the answer was given. Item D, motion to approve the Saw Village, of Saw, Village of Saw Village initiating accounts payable policy on behalf of the village board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, second by.
Let's get over him. Bell.
Bell.
What's his name?
Any questions?
Oh, comment, I just want to know, and I think I had to say this last week, how are we gonna enforce this and tell the vendors that they must comply with these rules that we've put in place in order for them to get paid? So there won't be like no miscommunication, and everybody gets paid in a timely fashion.
I don't think that the motion calls for your procedure of how you're going to notify. It's whether or not you are ready to afford to establish policy. So as you establish policy, how can you notify? It's a procedure thing when you're going your policy. Right, and you're voting to do it.
No, you're voting to accept this particular policy, which is the ordinance.
Correct.
You're voting on the ordinance. I don't know what you were saying, if they were voting on the ordinance, and that's in the ordinance states, that it would be a, a county policy put in place on behalf of the village board, so.
Correct, but they still have to abide by these rules. And so who's gonna put this in place and inform all of our vendors that this is the new policy, that they have to apply by these rules?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We had this discussion in the committee when we brought this to the board, and what we said was, the department heads to receive these invoices need to detail, if it's not received by the vendor, the department head should detail. And if the department heads don't have it to give detail, then whoever does receive it, whether it's the finance director or whomever, it's on them to get the detail. We just don't feel it's necessary or right to pay invoices that don't have detail. This was all discussed last week.
Any other questions? Because I'm not, you know, it's, some of this, but this is what the board wants. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Juzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Hale.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Motion's carried. Item E, motion to approve an ordinance limiting rights for legal services for the village of Saw Village.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Bell. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Hale.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Juzinski.
Motion's carried. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second your motion.
No, I'll entertain a motion.
Make that motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee, I guess you raised your hand, that was.
Yes, I did.
All in favor?
I.
Feel like I just, feel like I just tried to, a chimpanzee to read Japanese.
They kick up some.